I'd like to call the regular Oahu Neighborhood Board Meeting to Order. First off, anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the Chair, to address their comments to the Chair. And speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under three minutes and those giving reports are also urged to keep their reports under three minutes. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your electronic devices. As customary for our Neighborhood Board, we'd like to start off with our introductions of the Board members, starting with my right.
Good evening, Marine Andrade at Large.
Good evening, Richard Oshiro at Large.
Good evening, Nathan Chang, Sub District Three.
Good evening, Jaten Chang, Sub District Three.
Good evening, Jordan Ferro at Large.
Good evening, Daryl Macha, Sub District One. Correction, at Large.
Terry Tambaga at Large.
Chad Domingo at Large.
Captain Wilson at Large.
Thank you, Board members. Moving on to our agenda, I have the first responders. Do we have Honolulu Fire Department? Honolulu Police Department? No, I'll call upon our Military Report. Thank you, sir. Why don't introduce yourself?
Can you all hear me better now? Oh yeah, perfect. For any questions, you can email usarmy.hawaii.comrel, C-O-M-R-E-L, at army.mil or call at 808-787-2140. Additionally, the US Army Garrison Hawaii will be holding its next Hiring Fair on August 20th at the Helemano Military Reservation Training Room from 8:30 to 2:00 PM. This is open to the public and advanced applicants can go to www.himwr.com, click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are welcome and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume, or application. As always, for any questions, please call the Community Concern Hotline with the US Army Garrison Hawaii at 808-787-1528 or email at usarmy.hawaii.pao@army.mil. Pending your question, this concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Do we have any questions from the Board members? For our Military Report? Hearing none, thank you again for your service and attending this evening.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Still don't see first responders. If they do come into the room, we'll ask them to provide us a report. Next on our agenda are Board vacancies. We have... There aren't any residents interested in filling a vacant Board seat. You must provide current proof of residency to the Board. We have five at-large seats available. Do I have any residents in the audience this evening wishing to serve on this Neighborhood Board? Yay. Could you approach the podium, state your name, and let us know a little bit about yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Debbie Segal. I live in Ralakania. I retired from US Navy two years ago. I did EEO work. And what type of proof of residency do I need to show? About my driver's license.
Yes, your driver's license with the... That's your current address, right?
Okay.
Do you want to state anything else about yourself, share to the Board, why you want to serve on this Neighborhood Board?
Oh, um... Since I retired, I want to give back to the community and I walk around about three miles every day and I see things that are going on in my area that needs to be addressed. And I'm bored at home.
Thank you. You can... Hold on. Do I hear a nomination from the Board so we can have further discussion? I hear a nomination from our Board. Second? It's been moved and seconded, open for discussion. I guess... Anyone else have any questions for potential Board member? Nope? Okay, all in favor of accepting our new Board member? Pending verification with our assistant, of course. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Hearing none? Thank you. Welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
I will call a quick recess so that she can take the oath of office with our Board. So recess. Like to call our meeting back to order and welcome Debbie Segal to our Board. Moving on to our next item... Next items in our agendas is our Board Business and our Annual Meeting Procedures. First off is the election of Board Officers to serve from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th of 2025. Do I hear any nominations? For the seats of Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer?
Can I speak?
Well, go ahead.
I would like to just nominate all of you folks back in there.
So your nomination or...
To keep the same...
Your motion?
My motion is to keep the same Board, but that's just my motion to do that. I mean...
Before we discuss, do I hear a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, open for discussion. So the motion is to keep the current slate, which is Chair Connie Herelaga, Vice Chair myself, Daryl Macha. Treasurer is... Jaten, right? Jaten Chang, Secretary... Nate? Oh, Richard Oshiro. Correction, okay, that is the motion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Yeah, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries? Your... Board of Officers will remain the same for July 2024 until June 2025. Thank you. Next item is the meeting date, time, and location. As... We have already... Been meeting on the Fourth Thursday of every month, 7:00 PM here at the Philcom Center. I guess I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to keep it here and the only reason why I'm saying this is we can't find anywhere else. And the Philcom Center has given us a really good... They've helped us a lot to keep the cost down and to help us when we need it. So, and it's a prime place to have.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, further discussion. The motion on the table is to keep our meeting date the Fourth Thursday of every month. 7:00 PM, Philcom Center. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Thank you. Next item is the determination of Board recess schedule. We have up to three per year. Historically, we have been recessing, I believe, in the month of December. And I cannot recall our other... Oh, excuse me, August. And we are entitled to three. So... Do I have a motion to... June?
June.
Yep. Okay, so motion. Do I hear a second and I'll repeat the motion? Seconded. Motion is to keep our recess dates for the month of June, August, and December. Any further discussion on the motion on the table? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Thank you. Okay, next item is the adoption of the oral testimony rules. As you can see forth, the rules of speaking always on our agenda. I don't think we need further discussion, but I do need motion. Motion, second? Any second? It's been moved and seconded, no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Next item is the formation of committees. The Board may establish committees. If any Board member is interested in serving a committee, please inform the Chair. I know we have only one standing committee or permitted interaction group or actually just a member. Correct me if I'm wrong, Member DeGracia? You're a member on the...
The OMPO.
OMPO, correct. I guess we don't have to vote on that for now, okay? We'll move on. I'll move on. Item on your... Next item on your agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes from Thursday, May 23rd. It's been passed out. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Anyone have any corrections to the minutes?
I have one.
Go ahead, Member.
It's on the under Council Member Met Wire. Where it says, which puts on to the 2024 general election. I believe that should be ballot.
Uh, okay, just a...
Just a typo.
Any further corrections? Pending a correction, do I hear it? Any motion to accept the minutes as submitted? Motion to accept, excuse me? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries? Finally, on Board Business is the Oahu Metro Planning Organization City Advisory Committee, OMPO. This section, I guess we're appointing an alternate. Our primary is... Member Daniel DeGracia. Do we have anyone wishing to volunteer for an alternate to the OMPO Committee from our Board?
Yeah, I'll be happy to volunteer as our alternate.
Member Wilson is...
Volunteering, okay, yes.
Member Wilson has volunteered as a alternate for OMPO. Hearing no opposition. Please state your, I guess, approval by saying aye. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the Resident and Community Concerns. First off, I'd like to reach out to the Board. Do we have any resident or community concerns from the Board members? Member Andrade?
We continue to have, and HPD is not here, so it doesn't matter. But I did raise this the last time we were here about the racing in Village Park in Ralakania and it continues. Also, our great firework program that I don't know what's happening, but we still have them every night. So I don't know. I understand that now the Marshals are taking care of this, right? From what I understand. And there's a number on the website that you can call or you can be anonymous. So some of our neighbors have been calling and some of them has stated that they've waited and nobody show up. And so our private API guy has waited for like an hour at a particular home and nobody showed up. So I don't know what kind of program they have. So I'm just a little concerned that this is a program that is not working. So I don't know, maybe Council Member, he can check on that. Because I don't know, I don't think HPD is now doing it, right? Or when they call HPD, nobody shows up. You know, they go online with that new number that they have for the Marshals to come or to do... They do drive-by, I think, and they do go to the... Supposed to go to where you're telling them it's coming from. So I'm not sure what's going on. I don't know if it started. So maybe you could check on that. And I'll check on our end with the Marshals, but...
Any other resident concerns from our members? Hearing none, any community resident concerns out in the audience? Please approach the podium. And please state your name for the record.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Abby Sights. I'm with Butter Block Hawaii. We're a local nonprofit that is partnering with the City Department of Transportation Services on the Waipahu Quick Build Safety Project. And this is not so much a concern, but just rather an update on a project that we shared with the Board, I believe in January earlier this year with, along with my colleague, Justin. And we just wanted to give a update tonight about the status of the project. Just a little bit as a refresher, maybe for those who didn't join us earlier in the year. The main goals of this project are to reduce vehicle speeds, increase the visibility of pedestrians, and also shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians along Leoku Street. This is particularly important for this roadway because it is one of the few high pedestrian injury locations outside of urban Honolulu. And we'll be doing that through kind of two main improvements. That is delineated curb extensions that will feature street art as well as a pedestrian refuge island at the Leoku Street-Leoluwa Crossing. And since we last met with you, our main kind of focus was recruiting a project artist. So we had distributed a large call for artists. We received over 15 proposals, which was really amazing. And we ended up selecting Zach Anhales. He's a multimedia artist that was born and raised in Eva, but spent a lot of time in Waipahu visiting family as a child. And so we worked with him on developing different variations of mural schemes and ultimately included that in a recent survey that we had asked for feedback on what folks felt their favorite variation was and what kind of symbols should be included. Ultimately, the mural design that was selected on the back of the sheet here represents the artist's time again in Waipahu as a child growing up. Essentially, kind of his vision of schools of fish traveling upstream along Leoku Street to create memories with their family. So kind of quickly in terms of the timeline, we're still on track to implement this project in the fall. I'm planning to begin around October. We're going to have opportunities for community to essentially get their hands dirty, participate in implementing the street art along with the artist. So once we have the dates confirmed for that, we can share that with the Neighborhood Board and hopefully can also get that out to the community at large. And so I know that this was kind of a really a quick refresher, but if there's interest from the Board, we're happy to come back in September and give a longer presentation on the artwork and just opportunities to get involved. But yeah, I'll open it up for any questions that there may be.
Anyone have any questions at this time? Any questions? Member DeGracia?
Chair, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we include them on the next agenda just so there's a space reserved in case there's any key updates.
Okay, so you're making that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion, having them return back in September, did you say? Or what have you communicated and contacted Chair? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Please get in touch with our Chair and then she can work you into our tentative schedule for September.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other resident concerns? Moving on to our presentation section, do I have the update on the Mahi Solar Project? Perfect. Mr. Westcott?
Yeah.
Right?
All right. Good evening, Board members and neighbors. My name is Ren Westcott. I am here to give an update on the Mahi Solar Project. This is a project that will be located in Kuniya. I live, I grew up in Molukai and I know everyone's like, wow, Molukai? I live in Manoa now and I've been working in renewable energy for about 17 years, building wind farms and solar farms. And this is our, this is the largest project that we've worked on today. This would be the largest solar project in the state of Hawaii, largest renewable energy project. Just big picture, right? The reason why, you know, my company and others work on renewable projects is because climate change is so important and it's affecting our planet in a lot of ways, from temperature to fires to sea level acidification, sea level rise, ocean acidification. And so one of the ways that we can help is replacing the fossil fuel that gets burned in the HECO plants to make all this electricity with renewable sources. A lot of you folks have solar on your homes, so you get it. And so we're trying to build larger projects that can connect to the grid to provide clean energy to the whole island. You know, it connects, this one will be in Kuniya, but once it's hooked to the grid, that energy goes everywhere. So it's really for all the people that can't have solar on their homes, this is, you know, solar for the whole island. Oahu, as you know, there's a law that says Hawaii's got to get to 100% of this electricity generated from renewable sources by 2045. As of 2023, Oahu is about 29.6%. So we got a long way to go. Hawaiian Electric did a RFP and one of the projects, they selected about eight projects on three islands and one of the projects was the Mahi Solar Project. I was here and so it was selected to move forward. And I was here about three, four years ago, three years ago, talking about the project, gave an introduction and explained the project. And then because of the pandemic and then the supply chain crisis, we couldn't, all the equipment got super expensive, so we couldn't build the project for the price that we had agreed to with HECO years before. So the PUC said, well, you got to rebid. So we went back, rebid. It's the same project, but we had to go through the HECO bidding process again with a new price. And so that's, you know, that's sort of why I'm talking to the project again. A lot of the Board members are new. Some of you may remember be talking about the project before. But Chair, last time I was here, asked to come and give a little bit more presentation so I could explain the project. The project is what's outlined in yellow here with the thumb tack. It is about 620 acres total. It is, as you go Maoka on Kuniya Road, this is past the big power lines that go across Kuniya Road. It is on the Eva side or the Wayanai Mountain side of Kuniya Road, the west side. And again, Maoka of Ralakania and it's below Kuniya Lower Ridge farmlands, those lots up there. The land is owned by three different entities. Some of it is owned by our company, Long Road Energy. We bought some of the land. Most of the rest of it is Fat Law Farms. They're leasing us the land and then some of the land is on land that's owned by Bear for the transmission line connection. I mentioned that the project, same project... I mentioned that the project, same project, but we kind of had to restart because of the supply chain crisis. One of the things that we're doing on the project is, the area was, when we talked to people about the project, they said, you know, one of the most important things, this area is an agricultural area historically. So what can you do to support farmers? So one of the things we're doing, in addition to creating the renewable energy, is we're going to be farming, doing crops in between the rows of solar panels and trying to use the land for both agriculture and energy at the same time. This is called agrivoltaics. It's using, you know, it's trying to get, you know, combining photovoltaics and agriculture. We have been doing a research project, trying to find out what grows well, what could grow under solar panels. So some of the crops that have been grown either under or between is hydroponic lettuce. We've done lots of like Swiss chard, broccoli, cauliflower. They're trying tomatoes right now. They tried taro. So we've got a research project going on that we're funding, along with some other solar companies, trying to figure out what can we grow? So we're not just taking 500, 600 acres out of agriculture, but we're using it for both. And so that's the idea. So we're funding some research right now that's being done by the Hawaii Ag Research Center. We are talking with local farmers about coming on and leasing part of our land to, part of the solar farm land to grow crops. So we signed one lease for 45 acres for hydroponic lettuce farming. And so the goal is to eventually lease out all the property, sublease it to farmers and ranchers. And then to share the results so that other solar farms can do something similar. Here's some examples of some of the research. So the left side is lettuce, there's Swiss chard, broccoli, and then the logs on the left-hand side, they're actually working on mushrooms. So they stack up logs and they spray them with mushroom spores, and then they cover them to grow mushrooms. So they're having some, some good success there, but it's because it's in the shade most of the time, under the panels. The goal is the project would be completed by the end of 2027. Takes a few years to permit, and then it takes about a year and a half in construction to build the project. So if all goes well, we're hoping to be completed by the end of 2027 and, and be online. We've done lots of studies from traffic to glare to archaeology, biology, and hydrology. And we've done some visual simulations, which I will show you at the end. We have secured most of the permits that we need for the project, except for, we have a special use permit that we're hoping to get approved by the Land Use Commission, the state Land Use Commission, later this year, and then we have to get our building permits. The project should create energy for about 40,000 homes. So it will support a lot of, you know, that's how much electricity it will generate throughout the year. So that means we don't have to get that energy from, that's, HECO can run their oil, burn oil less, right? There, there are other plants for burn oil, right, or diesel, and they can reduce those generators, the use of those generators. So we're replacing it with solar. And then there's also batteries connected to the project so that they can use some of the energy to charge the batteries during the day. And then at nighttime, you know, in the solar, when there's, the solar panels are not generating anything, they'll be able, HECO can discharge from the batteries so that those batteries then go into the grid, and that energy goes into the grid. There will be some more traffic during construction. Deliveries, larger trucks, sort of 18-wheelers bringing in, you know, equipment and panels. But again, that's total of about 18 months or so. So in that area, there will be some more traffic. We will have folks onsite to direct, you know, people coming off and, off and on the road because people drive fast down Cunea Road, too fast. And then the visual during operations, it's probably about the same, you know, as it is now. There's a lot of farmers in the area, and so the traffic during, when the project is operating for, you know, 25 plus years should be about, the traffic will be about the same as it is now. There's, the solar farm, once it's operating, usually only has like two or three people working at the farm. So there's about, but there's about 200 jobs during construction. And this is just kind of a timeline. We're hoping to get the development this year, next year, in construction, '26, '27, and then operation for at least 25 years after that. Here are some of the Photoshop, like visual simulations. This one is taken from the corner of, spacing on the name of the road, but where you drive up Cunea Lower Ridge Farmlands, they have, this, this sign has been up forever, right, to, to sell lots there. If you look over, there's kind of a berm with trees and vegetation on top, kind of like a hedge. This is what you'd be able to see right along Cunea Road. So right, if you're driving right next to the project, you'd be able to see the panels. This is further down. This is called Third Crossing. It's one of the yellow, yellow agricultural gates. If you were to drive in off Cunea Road and look Maoka, you could see the, why am I pointing over here? You guys kind of see this? You could see the panels, you know, kind of low over here. So you can see it from close if you're right along Cunea Road. And then further, as you get down, this is by Royal Cunea, the intersection. Hello, new Royal Cunea Board Member. That's the first time, like, I'm in, I have a neighborhood and I'm board, so I'm going to join the neighborhood board. Love that. And then if you're up in Makakilo, kind of like on the, you know, this side of Makakilo, if you were to look down, you can see some of the panels. And then if you're way back in Pearl City, Aia, you look, you know, from, from a distance, you can see some of the panels on the slopes. A little harder to see from the distance, but you can see the panels up on the, on the, kind of the foothills of the, of the Wainai Mountains. Okay, so that's my presentation. We do have a project webpage that has updates. It's longrodenergy.com/mahi. Or you can email me at mahisolar@longrodenergy.com. And you can sign up and we can post updates as they become available. So that's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you for the update. Any questions from the board members? Remember Oshiro?
Few questions. First of all, 620 acres of solar panels. Looking at your map, does that look like maybe like three or four parcels?
Yeah, it is.
It's not one block of.
Correct, yeah, there's, it's sort of spread out.
Yeah, because three, I mean, 620 acres, that's comparable to maybe three cup courtes. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's 620 acres total, about 500 acres would be covered with panels. Yeah.
With the total. The other part of it is, you said agrivoltaics.
Yeah.
Ag portion of this, what kind of infrastructure has to go in? Secondly, do you have water? And if you're doing research now, does that mean that farmers have to take a risk? Or is there something, can they go right into it? Or do they have to wait for the research, which, you know, who knows how long that'll fix? So can you kind of explain that part of it?
Yeah, good question. So the research is meant to be happen, to, to, to generate information for farmers to share. So the research portion is on, is in Mililani at a different solar farm that is already built, because we don't have anything constructed yet. So the photos that I showed, that's a site in Mililani. It's an existing solar farm. We got about two acres where they're doing research of what grows, what can grow, you know, because it's partial shade, right, under, between the panels. So they want to know what could work, how do you, you know, how do you, what grows well, what doesn't grow well? So they're finding that a lot of winter crops actually do pretty well. You can grow them year-round because it's, it's a lot of shade, right? They don't need full sun. So that's what, the research is happening there. What we're doing is we're going to be, you know, inviting farmers to come in. We'll provide the lease, the land very cheap, a dollar per acre per year. So very cheap for farmers. Our goal is to lower the cost because it's a pain, right? You know, are you going to come in and farm between solar panels? So through incentives, we give them lower rent, and we will, we will provide, we have water from Cunea Water Association that will be sharing the cost with the farmers of the water. So sort of helping subsidize the cost of the water. Also, all this area where the panels are shown in black, all the yellow lines is fencing. So there'll be an eight-foot chain link fence, you know, which helps with security for farmers, their tools, their infrastructure, roads will be put in. So we're, you know, we're hoping that, you know, the goal is to kind of have a synergy, right? So we lower the cost for farmers, we try to get them interested in doing farming or ranching on this, on this land.
Thank you.
Did I answer all your questions?
How much interest is there?
Oh, sorry?
How much interest is there amongst the farmers in Hawaii to do this kind of farming?
Yeah, I think some people have been interested so far. We've got, we signed one lease for 45 acres for lettuce. We've got another guy's interested in doing Mamaki tea, which grows better in the shade. So I think it's going to be, we're still working on getting people interested. Yeah. Sure.
Any questions on this side? Remember Dave?
Thanks for the brief. Question about the capacity and he said 120 megawatts. Is that peak power or is that like an average number for?
120 megawatts is the capacity, so that would be the max that we would put out.
Yeah, so I'm just curious of the battery capacity. So it just seems, so it's four times the max?
Correct, yeah, four hours. That's what HECO asks for, yeah, yeah.
Is there any cost estimate, like a kilowatt hour equivalent?
We will sell it to HECO at, the wholesale rate to HECO is 17 and a half cents. So that's, so we, you know, we're the wholesaler, right? So we contract with HECO, we provide them the power at that rate, and then HECO sells it to us at much more.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Westco, for your update. And can you give the website one more time?
Yeah. Kind of mess up my own website name. It's longrodenergy, all one word, longrodenergy.com/mahi.
Thank you, and thank you again for giving us an update.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next in our presentation is the Waipio Point Access Road Multimodal and Safety Improvement Project Update, and we have Dean Sakamoto.
All right. Good evening. My name is Dean Sakamoto, and I'm the Executive Director of Shade Institute. Shade, Shade stands for Sustainable Humanitarian Architecture and Design for the Earth. I'm an architect by profession, and Shade is a nonprofit, and it, our mission is to provide low-bono, pro-bono, community-based design and planning to other nonprofit organizations in our community. And what we typically do is work between government agencies to cut through the bureaucracy and get things done and funded as a third party to do capital improvement projects. And how we do this is through our intern training and mentorship program. So tonight I'm joined by Juliana and Peao. Juliana is a graduate student in architecture from Jewry University. She's from Texas, but she's here for the summer to work with us. Peao is from University of Washington, originally from China, a graduate student in landscape architecture. Okay, let me just adjust this, it's a little high for me. All right, so tonight I'm here to share progress, oh, sorry, too loud, right? Share progress on the Waipio Point Access Road Multimodal and Safety Improvement Project. This project has been going on for eight years, and Shade Institute got involved in 2016 with a bunch of partners here. So you can see the logos queued up here. We have Waipahu High School, Waipahu Aloha Clubhouse, that might be the state of Hawaii, city and county of Honolulu, Department of Transportation Services. And I guess this one is Waipahu, Waipahu High School. G70 is our civil engineering partner and urban planning partner and key concepts of landscape architects. So what Shade does as the lead project designer, we've become the de facto nonprofit developer for the project because we needed a portal to bring in funding. So this, what was fueled this project is a combination of state and city funding over the last eight years, and mainly to get the project off the ground, to do the necessary planning and design, to get the entitlements done, the environmental approvals. And then now we're finally in a position where we're ready to execute. We were working with DTS, the city, as a partner. We have an MOU with DTS, and DTS will procure and manage construction. So Shade has done all the due diligence like a developer would typically do. You know, we didn't sign up for this, it just kind of happened. We learned a lot along the way, and it's due to really our, I think, the leadership in your community here. This project began almost 20 years ago, and I think some of you might remember when Plaistis Nishihara became their senator, and he recently retired, but he started this project back in 2005, trying to get the city and the state to work together to build a safe sidewalk from Farrington Highway pretty much to the Aloha Clubhouse. And it goes to a bridge to Ted Maccalena, and then the trailhead. But it's been, it's been a challenge because it's sort of a mixed jurisdiction, right? You have the high school on one side, which is a state-funded institution, you have the clubhouse, which is of the Department of Health, and you have an older residence, an older neighborhood that was built before subdivision standards. So what our role was, was basically to go between the city and state and say, hey, here's an idea, here's, here's a plan. And how we work at Shade is we work with our stakeholders, we do workshops, and we, we listen to them, we get their manao, and we apply it to our designs. So what I'm sharing today is a presentation from just last week, actually, it was a workshop at the Aloha Clubhouse, the clubhouse members and the high school, which was represented by Principal Zach Sheets, who is actually a big supporter on the project, along with the students. And I don't know if we had any neighborhood residents show up, but none of them showed up, but we did canvass the neighborhood to get their input. So we're at the point now where we're ready to procure. DTS has put the project out to bid, and the bid has not been awarded, but there is a little bidder that's been identified. So what I'm here to report tonight is where we are pretty much in the project. I'm going to breeze through this because I think some of you know about the project. How many of you have been here, were here in 2020? What was here? Okay, so you guys have heard about this project before. Representative Chun was then the Chair of the Board. So, you know, we go back a while, so we're here to give you progress. It'll start in 2016 here. I also should say that this project here, working with the city, is a textbook complete streets project. So that's what really got, got DTS excited because here's their, this is their opportunity, really, to really flesh out, you know, work with, with Shade and work with the community to flesh out and create a complete streets project. Because when it first started, the ask by Senator Nishihara and the clubhouse was just to put a sidewalk on one side of the street, right, to make it safe. But when we did a bigger planning study with DTS, and here's just a diagram, and you can see, you can see on one side, there's a mouse here. Here's Farrington Highway here, up here, which is a rail. High school's here. Oh. Sorry, my surface is not behaving here. And this stretch here, the orange is the pathway that we're designing. So for the city, it really was, for DTS, it made sense because we're now connecting the rail line along Farrington Highway to the trailhead. This, this is the Pearl Harbor Memorial Trail, to the improved trail in front of Pearl Harbor, that NAFAC worked the city on about 10 years ago, maybe 15 years ago now, up to the soccer park, and we showed them how it could connect through the soccer park up to Depot Street. And the pink represents the city's, their, their complete streets plan that was manifested in 2015 with the action plan, TLD Action Plan. So here, here's our map and our overall plan, which we presented here in 2020. And it's sort of a overview and kind of an ideal plan. And it's, it's sort of a overview and kind of an ideal plan. And you can see on the, on the, on your left side here, this is the triangle. The high school students call this the triangle. This is where they, they have to cross, uh, from the, the one pedestrian gate at the school when school starts and when it ends. Uh, and, and it's just a piece of asphalt. Uh, and we've seen, uh, hundreds of students there before and after school, waiting to cross, waiting to be picked up, and crossing across Farrington High, Farrington, um, Highway. So our plan here is showing the green area along the, uh, the side of the, the high schools where the new path, uh, proposed path is taking place. And it's, it's just under a quarter mile. And, and what the numbers represent is, um, uh, uh, number one is a bus drop-off. We have two bus drop, drop-offs. Because right now the, the school, uh, when they have bus pickup and drop-off, has to have the bus parks right on the road, and that narrow two-lane YPO Point Access Road. Uh, we're providing, uh, landscaping, uh, native, native plants that actually would be okay with, with, uh, with runoff from cars, with apparent pickup and drop-off. Uh, we're, we're retaining the beautiful monkey pond trees that, that line the high school on this side, adding a few more trees. Uh, and we're also providing, uh, some parallel parking, about ten stalls for the students because they, you know, right now they don't have any parking. Uh, and, and as you see today, they're parking in the bushes, which is quite dangerous. We've also identified through our study, we worked with a cultural expert. What was interesting, and I think most of you know this, before the plantation days, right? Waipahu was a very rich area of native culture. It was a, a large settlement with some of the largest loe and fish ponds on Oahu. Uh, and, uh, we've identified the E name of the, the location, Halalani. And, and ideally that would be that we renamed the triangle as Halalani Triangle, or Halalani Park possibly, uh, and created these rest nodes along the way that would, would cite the history, the pre-contact history, pre-plantation history of the area. This is just a rundown of, of, of some of the, the history that we did. Uh, the Ahuana Hea was very significant, and interestingly, it's located right where the Aloha Clubhouse is right now. And as you know, the Aloha Clubhouse is a place of healing, right? It's a place of healing, a place of training mentally disabled adults for, 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 uh, for the workforce. Uh, and Ahuana Hea was either right there or adjacent to it at one time. Loko Eo was a, a large fish pond. You know, Ted Maccalena Golf Course pretty much was local Eo at one point, but it was filled, um, uh, during the plantation days. Uh, Le Pao was a former, um, uh, uh, Alii's residence, and Papa Ili, Ii, uh, residence was near this area of Halalani. And during the sugar days, it was a site of the, uh, Hawaii Sugar Plantation Association Experimental Station, right around where the, the high school is, because the high school came in later, right? Remember the, the Waipahu High School used to be where the, the middle school is right now. Okay, here's just some of the, um, uh, illustrations that Shade has made over the years. Of, uh, the first one on the upper left is a new ADA compliant wheelchair ramp to get up to the clubhouse. Because one of the problems we're solving with this project is providing, uh, uh, an accessible pathway up to the clubhouse because some of the members are physically disabled, and they're in wheelchairs. And right now the, the, the current, uh, path is too steep, and it also floods when it rains. Uh, in the top middle is a, a view, uh, looking up at the, the new rail, which is there, uh, and how the park, the improvement of the triangle could, could really soften that area. Uh, then an aerial view, um, like a bird's, bird's eye view, looking down at the, um, the wheelchair ramp up to the clubhouse. Uh, and then a view of, uh, an ideal view of the pathway with a rest node, with a bench, and maybe some interpretation to tell the story, uh, and the history of the area. So this, this, this diagram just simply shows the high school, how the high school is related to the pathway, uh, and the clubhouse in purple on, on the right-hand side. And this is, um, a collage that kind of set the project in motion, um, eight years ago, when we simply identified some of the issues. This is a view looking, uh, we're looking towards Farrington Highway, uh, just as, you know, it's, it's kind of a hairpin, a slight hairpin curve. Uh, to the right, you have the overgrowth on the high school side, and you have a lot of encroachment, uh, you know, you know, people who over the years have sort of built their own, their garages and driveways onto the city property. What's interesting here is you have a very wide right-of-way. At some places, you know, it's almost three hundred feet, uh, but you have a very skinny road, right? And people go fast on that skinny road. So you have this overgrowth, and you have people kind of doing their thing on the residential side. So the path of least resistance literally was to, to build the multimodal pathway on the side of the high school and the clubhouse. So you minimize crossing also for, for the clubhouse members. And this just illustrates some of the issues. This is looking towards, uh, Maccalena Golf Course, high school's on your left. So all the overgrowth is going away. Now this shows a flooding issue. When it rains, the bottom of the driveway at the clubhouse, you know, water comes up, you know, almost up to your knees sometimes. So our, our new road design is also gonna, our new pathway design is gonna improve the surface drainage on YPO Point Access Road. Okay, so phase, phase one is actually what we're, we're out, we, we put out the bid. Because, uh, we had anticipated a, an original project budget of just over four million dollars for the plan you, I showed in the beginning. Uh, but was, what was available funding-wise from the city and the state was about two million dollars. So what took us long between the last four years was to re-phase the project, um, and get all our approvals. We have all the approvals in place now from the city. Um, and phase one is really just doing the pathway, just doing the basic things, providing the landscape and the drainage improvements. But you see on, on the left side, the triangle is still not implemented in this plan. So we're, we're thinking if there is a phase two, we, we would get funding to update the triangle. Uh, and, and also to add the, uh, the cultural interpretation, and maybe more lighting on the pathway, a few more safety features, uh, for phase two. So that, what I, what I'm showing you now is actually out to bid. The technical plans are complete, and a contract is about to be awarded. And, uh, uh, yeah, we're hoping to start construction, hopefully, uh, early next year. That's what the city said. So here's just some views of what a, a cross-profile would look like, the pathway. Uh, and you can see the slight indention by the road, how the road drains now into a swale, uh, and we're, we're gonna improve the drainage there. Oh, here's the timeline. I'm sorry, this slide is all kind of messed up. But it goes back to two thousand sixteen, where we, we began the discussion and working very closely with our community partners, uh, and, uh, with the clubhouse, the high school, and area residents, and of course, the neighborhood board. And if we zip down to, uh, two thousand twenty-four, the project is procured, uh, D, uh, thanks to DTS. And we're hoping that construction will start. A contract should be awarded by the end of the year. Ideally, construction will start in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five, and it'll take about a year to complete phase one. So there will be some construction, uh, about a year's worth, uh, between twenty twenty-five, first quarter, and twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Do you have any questions from our board members from my right? Any board members on my left? Remember Andrade?
I just wanna say, I've attended a whole bunch of these meetings. Um, it has been about ten years. Yeah? So, yeah, but, but with Clarence, yeah. But, um, it's amazing what they've done, and they did include, um, talking to students there. And I think you folks remember when the students came here and they had their own little, so, um, and they were excited. This is actually smaller than what we initially wanted, and because of the funding. So I think this is a good start for that area. And I do have a care home across the street that do attend Aloha Clubhouse. And they've told me that it's so hard to get up to that place when it rains. So, you know, I think it's a good thing to support, just my opinion, but it's something that they've worked on so hard, and even the school. So, thank you. Thank you, Dean.
And, and thank you, Mo. Uh, I also should, um, acknowledge, uh, your area leaders. Uh, Senator Aquino has been us from the beginning as a representative, along with Mo. Uh, and, uh, it was Senator Aquino, and also at the time, it was Councilmember Elafonte, who is now replaced by Augitoba, who I've known for many years. And, uh, and Corey Chun, who has stepped up to be our area representative. So thank you very much, uh, for the leadership, and of course Clarence Nishihara. And our other, uh, community champion is Mary Pat Waterhouse of the Aloha Clubhouse. She's a, uh, she was formerly the president of the Friends of Aloha Clubhouse, who first brought the project to our attention. So thank you very much. Uh, I think, uh, what, um, uh, we'd like to do is to, uh, come back and see you again, uh, when construction is about to start. Because one of what, one of the outcomes of our last meeting with the clubhouse is that the subject of our next workshop would be about safety during construction, right? Because you can imagine, as construction's happening, there's barricades and things like that. So we're gonna go work, introduce a contractor to, um, our stakeholders and talk about job site safety for everyone, pedestrians and people working there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, we look forward to, uh, having you folks back for an update and, so, communicate with the chair. So was there any questions from the audience for Mr. Sakamoto before we move on? Oh, thank you again for your presentation, and we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, next items on our, uh, agenda is elected officials. Do I have someone from Mayor Rick Leonardi's, uh, office or representative? Not here? Okay. Councilmember Matt Wyer?
Aloha, board members, members of the community. I did, uh, distribute and have on the table our newsletter. Um, has our contact info on there, including our email, uh, for those watching on TV. M is in Matt, Weyr, W E Y E R, at honolulu.gov. Uh, on legislative updates, the biggest item we're working on right now is what was previously built in, now Bill sixty-four. It's updates to the Land Use Ordinance. It's been a two-and-a-half-year process. We're coming up on the agricultural section. And so we are doing stakeholder groups and welcome input from the community. I know not everyone, um, is equally invested in those portions, but we'll be going through that for the rest of the year. And so if you have any thoughts about any portion of the L U O, I mean, you can send those over to us. I wanted to also know, we got several emails about, uh, the new bike lane going in on, on Oiki Street. That is a project that was planned for the past few years. Uh, we've been talking to the department, and their intention, uh, in putting forward the project was to respond to the parking speeding and lording concerns in the area. I'm using the bike lane as a mitigation measure. I will be at the upcoming, uh, Royal Kuniya, Kuniya Association meeting, and so happy to talk story there if folks have questions as well. I know the board recessed in, in June, um, but prior to that, at the end of the school year, we did have a chance to go with our community policing team, uh, to the Waipahu High School Academy of Professional Public Services into the Year Event. And specifically got to talk with the Law and Justice Pathway students. Appreciate the work that, you know, our community policing team is doing in the community. I'm hopeful that, uh, cadet program, uh, the HPD is in the process of rolling out, uh, will help increase, you know, um, or I guess respond to the vacancies at the department, right? Because you can't go through the academy until you're twenty-one, uh, when you can hold a firearm or carry a firearm. And so by providing opportunities for youth exiting high school, I think we can maybe work towards filling those vacancies and see increased presence in our, our community. Uh, also, had a chance, I know it's in Councilmember Okimoto's district, but to visit the new Biata Behavioral Health Clinic in YPO. I think it's gonna be a great asset to our community. They provide autism, individualized autism and ABA clinic-based services. Uh, and so, uh, definitely something that I think would help serve some of our families, especially with those with children's with, uh, special needs. Wanted to also just note that as we approach September, that's the deadline for filing all your dedication petitions for your property, that's September first. And then September thirtieth is a deadline to file any exemption or credit forms. I know, as I've mentioned in the past, if you've already filed your homeowner-occupant exemption, um, you're good to go. Um, that's the reduced property tax rate that you pay, uh, when you're living in the home that you own. I'm just wanted to note, because every year there's always folks that, uh, end up losing it because maybe they had a passing in the family or the home transferred to, say, the kids. And so if they weren't on the original form, uh, they would pretty much have to pay the higher rate that tax year, and then of course submit the form. So now's a good time to just double-check, um, to make sure that your, uh, your property is good to go on that. And just also reminding everyone that we did increase the low-income tax credit from sixty thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars last year. Um, so if the homeowner is, uh, making eighty thousand dollars or less, uh, then they can file for the low-income tax credit, and that caps property tax payments at three percent of your income. Um, just given the value of the properties we have, and when you're looking at what dual-income households are experiencing, uh, we are gonna introduce legislation to raise that, um, to a thousand dollars, so a hundred thousand dollars rather. And so, um, keep, you know, your eyes open for that. And if you're interested in submitting testimony on that, we'll, we'll make sure you know how to do that. Uh, in terms of other questions, I know at the last meeting, the question came up about the new ocean safety department and about whether they would be absorbing resources from HFD. Um, so until recently, they were attached in the same department with emergency services. So the folks that run our ambulances, uh, you know, a few years ago, um, after some unfortunate events, uh, ocean safety absorbed most of the water activity that, uh, HFD does. And so all the jet skis went over to them. And so a lot of people don't know, I think, the size and the scope of the work that our ocean safety first responders do, right? They're doing all of the tower services. Uh, and so that's both performing rescues in our near-shore waters and also serving an educational component to the community, right? I mean, if you've ever been out to the beach, you see them yelling on the, the bullhorn, um, to both, you know, visitors, but also locals alike who maybe get out in the water when they shouldn't. And then, of course, they also do our rescue operations. So those are the folks that get out on the jet skis. And we have several units across Oahu. Uh, and in total, there's a, around two hundred and eighty ocean safety, um, staff. And so it is a relatively big, previously division and now department. And so really, I think what that does is puts it on the same level as other first responders in terms of just identifying how we need to evaluate budgets. Uh, and coming to board member Andrade's question, we'll follow up, uh, on the process and the reason for any delays. Um, just to share some more information, the state did create, uh, Illegal Fireworks Task Force under the State Department of Law Enforcement. And they provided three ways to report illegal firework use, um, the board member had mentioned, right? So one of them is reporting it to the phone number eight zero eight, five one seven, two one eight two. And you're asked to leave a detailed message with the address, if possible, or at least the location of the incident, any description of the persons involved, including names if you have them, and of course, any information on the fireworks being used, whether you're able to identify them or at least describe them. You can also do that over online at law.hawaii.gov. There's an online form that you can fill out, and either through that website or at the git saferwatch.com website, you can download the app, uh, that was mentioned earlier as well. Uh, just wanted to note, uh, that you should still call nine-one-one for any ongoing emergencies. And we're gonna clarify with HPD and also DLE about where that line is, because I think there may be some discretion, right? Uh, but just in following up after the question came up, I know that, uh, HPD is taking in reports when they come in. Uh, but in terms of how they want those to be reported going forward, I defer to both dispatch and also the officers on the ground. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, councilmember. Any questions for our councilmember? From the board? Questions? Thanks for your part.
Okay. Mahalo. Thank you, everyone.
Let me call on, uh, yeah, Councilmember Val Komodos, representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jamie Shadell, Office of Councilmember Val Okimoto. Uh, council wrapped up its committee week. Uh, Councilmember Okimoto chaired the, uh, media on public safety. We had four measures on the agenda today, an appointment to the citizens. We had four measures on the agenda today, an appointment to the Citizens Advisory Commission on emergency management and a appointment to the Fire Commission. And HPD is also receiving a gift for expenses, followed by a bill on video monitoring on the skyline. That bill was postponed until a later date. The three previously mentioned resolutions will go before the full council meeting, which will be on August 7th, with honorary certificate program starting at 9:00 AM, followed by the full council meeting at 10:00 AM. And this meeting will be located at Honolulu Halei. Regarding our portion of this neighborhood board's purview, crest view, no significant updates. We did resubmit a request to the Department of Transportation Services regarding speeding along Lumikula Street, and that response is pending. Pending any questions, I'll stand on the written report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's representative? No questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agitoba.
Good evening, everyone, board members, everyone in the audience watching at home on Olelo. My newsletter is online or at the table. Okay, I'm gonna answer the three questions that was asked, and I know that Better Block came in and give you guys, maybe somebody answers, but I want to repeat it again, so that just in case you missed it, okay? So Board Member Tomaga noted flooding in the Waipou District Park parking lot. It happens whenever it rains, making it hard for Kupuna to walk around. Office connected with the park management and they are aware of the issue. They informed us that park crews routinely check for drainage features of the park to prevent rampant flooding, but unfortunately, the grading of the parking lot causes water to accumulate, fronting the pool. Park management will take appropriate actions as resources become available. Board Member Yamaguchi asked for the update on the curb extensions. Project and sidewalk mural by Waipou Post Office on Leoku and Leoluua Street. Office connected with Administrator of DTS Complete Streets Program learned that the bulb out in front of the post office was part of the alternate site called Site B, which is currently in limbo due to lack of funding. The project mural era area called Site A is concentrated around Leoku and Leoluua. Leoluua Street intersections is moving forward. Better Block Hawaii, which gave you guys the presentation, had great response for their call for artists and selected local artist Zach Angeles. The project is partially funded by Bloomberg Philanthropies and is scheduled for installation for fall of 2024. They anticipate installation in September. Board Member Andrade raised concerns regarding homelessness encampments at Hans Laurent Park after the city spent millions to renovate it. Our office has been working with the businesses and stakeholders in the area around Hans Laurent as part of our Win Back Waipou campaign. We are building community and collaboration between the businesses owners and connecting them with them, connecting them with resources. They need to take a more deterministic role in revitalizing, revitalizing our neighborhood. HPD has increased their presence and visibility in the area. Although the renovation work at Hans Laurent continues, the park remains closed and the containment fences came down, increasing visibility in the park and various dump sites have been cleared. The park itself is still in the custody of the City Department of Design and Construction, but we are told that they anticipate its return to the City Parks Department at the end of the month or early August at the latest. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Tobo. Any questions from the board? Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next item or next report from anyone from our governors? Hi, please put to the mic.
Hello. Hi. I am, my name is Shivani Ramos. I am, tonight I'm the governor's rep, the newly selected governor's rep. But my day job is the Public Information Officer at the Department of Labor and Industry Relations. So if you have any questions relating to my department, I'm more than happy to take them back. But I passed out the governor's newsletter, so it's also online and then you may see it on the table. And yeah, I just wanted to highlight a few of the governor's highlights in the newsletter. So this past, in June, the state hosted the Festival of Pacific or FestPAC for short for the first time. And yeah, it's the 13th annual FestPAC and we welcomed 25 nations from across the Pacific. And it was just truly an amazing event for just the entire state to experience. So I don't know if a lot of you went to FestPAC, that was pretty cool. And there was a flurry of bills signing by the governor. The governor signed, I think, 253 out of the 260 bills. And he tackled key areas such as short-term rental regulation, affordable housing, environmental protection, native Hawaiian cultural preservation, healthcare systems, and I think the biggest one, the historic income tax reform and the cost of living. And yeah, in the newsletter, you'll find a lot of other stories, good stories, like there was a lot of graduations that happened and the national recruitment for the next UH president is also underwear. And before I take any questions, I just wanted to share a little disclaimer. Even though my day job is at the state, my off hours, I'm also a Waipou resident, born and raised. I live five minutes away, so don't, don't shoot me. No, it's like, I'm one of you. So I understand there's a lot of concerns among the community, but I'm happy to take them back and relay them to the governor's team. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions that we can relate to Governor's representative from the board? Member DeGracia?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. One thing I did want to bring up, if you could relay this to Governor. So as you're probably aware, you know, over the last month, there's been a lot of upheaval, I guess you could say, a lot of traumatic events that have been happening both nationally and locally. And it's having an effect on a lot of people. I was wondering if it might be possible to check in with Governor Green, if he could make known to the public or available to the public more resources for mental health support or crisis support. I know that they have, for example, the Hawaii Cares Service, but I think there is definitely a growing demand for mental health support, specifically people who, you know, may be responding to things that they see in the news that are certainly very emotional and very traumatic to process. And I think, you know, even before the recent events, people were already starting to feel pretty isolated. I think one study said that like, you know, three out of five adults feel emotionally and socially isolated, so you can only imagine now. But if you could just relay to him, if he can make more resources known or available about what people can do if they need help or if they need someone to talk to.
I will relay that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or anything you wanted to relay to Governor's representative? Hearing none, thank you for your part. I do see Senator Kidani and Senator Aquino's report. Not present here, any representative for Senator Kidani and Senator Aquino? None, hearing none? The report was available. Yes, Representative Chan?
Good evening, board members. Corey Chan, on behalf of the State House, House District 35. So I circulated my board report. As you can tell, most of it is about the shade project that you recently got a presentation on, just because for you longtime board members, this is a long time coming. And just hearing that the contract went out for bid was just music to a lot of our ears, because this is something that we've been talking about for a decade almost. And just to see that it's finally going to happen is just really exciting, because that area really needs it. But I just wanted to mention one thing that's not in my report, and it's probably one of the top issues that the legislature is going to need to look at going into the next session, and that's the issue with property and casualty insurance. And so I don't know, you've probably heard about it, or maybe have you seen it? When you're, when you've gone to get your homeowner's insurance renewed? But what sort of happened, it's not just from the Lahaina wildfires, but it's also a national issue where a lot of natural disasters have happened in the last year, which is really driving up the cost of insurance. And it's especially hitting hard with condominium ownership, because for condos, you have to insure not just, you know, one property, but entire building and common areas and everything that's associated with, with it. So this past session, we were looking at bills to stabilize the market. And even if that passed, which it didn't, because it would increase the conveyance tax, it, there's no real silver bullet, because it's a really complex issue. And what may happen is just that's a lot of condo insurer boards are looking at ensuring their condos at less than 100%, which does cause issues with the resale and real estate markets, because it does make it harder to get loans to actually purchase a property if it's not, if the building or the property is not covered 100%. So that's something that we really need to solve. And it's something that we're looking at, but it's a really complex issue. And hopefully, we can come up with some type of solution very soon to help everybody out. But with that, I will stand on my report and take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Chan? Any questions? Thank you, Representative. And I do share that sentiment in regards to the property insurance. Yes, thank you. Hopefully, we can find a solution, but I doubt there is one. Again, it's a complex issue that's happening nationwide and might be all over the world. So thank you. I don't see any representative for Representative Lamisal, Representative Lechika, Representative Parrick. Hearing none, we have a representative from Congressman Ed Kees's office. Mr. Garcia?
Chairman Macha, members of the board, members in the audience and present, and for those who are tuning in on Olelo, eventually as this is being recorded. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my, the congressman's written report for the third quarter. I just want to go over it briefly, especially for those that are tuning in online. Congressman sits as a member of the House Appropriations Committee. This is the committee that funds the federal government each year with its 12 appropriations measures. The House Appropriations Committee, this is his sixth year as a member of that committee, has passed out all 12 of its appropriations measures, sent it to the full house for its consideration. I think all but two of the measures have been approved by the full house. On page two of the written report, he talks about what he has been able to secure in the defense appropriations measure. Also, I'm sorry, on page one, on the face page, he talks about what he's been able to secure for military construction and veterans affairs. In fact, Hawaii is going to be the recipient of the most military construction funding as compared to the rest of the country. In excess of $1.55 billion for military construction projects for the state in fiscal year 2025, which is supposed to start on October 1st, but I'm not quite sure when Congress actually and the president signs these measures into law. He also talks about on page two, what he's able to secure in the homeland security funding measure, which includes an item that we refer to as community project funding. In the past, it used to be given another name, pork barrel funding. But now they call it community project funding requests. It's been significantly revised, make sure that we do away with the kinds of scandals that were attached to the old pork barrel spending procedures. So in this particular funding measure for homeland security, he was able to secure $1.1 million in funding for the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to develop what's called a community disaster preparedness information platform for Hawaii. So whenever there's a disaster, the state agency can coordinate with other organizations, agencies, nonprofits, so that they can better share information in the face of a disaster or in the, as a disaster is upon us and they can marshal their resources to deal with the needs of the community should such a disaster befall us. So that's three of the 12 funding measures that his committee has approved. The House, as well as the Senate, has also approved an annual measure, what's referred to as the National Defense Authorization Act. This is a measure that has to be approved every year, so that gives the authority to the military to enact policies and to give them authorization to spend money on various defense programs. The most controversial item in both the House and the Senate has something to do with whether or not the draft is coming back, the military draft is coming back. For those of, especially men who turn 18, they had to register for what's called the selective service. This is that pool of applicants that's necessary to be drawn should the draft come back. The draft has not been effective since 1973. So the House and the Senate has said, well, you know what, let's make it automatic. Let's make it automatic. As soon as you turn 18, you will automatically be registered in selective service. Here to four, you had to know that you had to register for the selective service. So there are a lot of people that really don't know or understand that they had to do that. Okay? So this is a way to make it automatic, so you don't have to worry about whether or not you miss the deadline once you turn 18. Does that necessarily mean that the draft is coming back? The language in both the House and the Senate also says that women, women for the first time will register for the selective service and automatically too, by the way, when they turn 18. Congressman makes available for those of you who want to know what he's been doing on your behalf, he has his talk story sessions. He had one back on June 10th. You can actually watch that online on his website, case.house.gov. Also had a online discussion on one of the topics, top of mind these days, artificial intelligence, AI. So if you want to find out his discussion, what was shared online with a White House person in charge of the AI policy or the Biden administration, you can watch that also online as well. And the congressman also wants people to know that for those who are interested in signing up for the military in the military service academies, West Point Naval Academy and Adenapolis Air Force Academy, as well as the US Merchant Marine, members of Congress can appoint members, can appoint young people to those academies. You have to meet certain criteria to be eligible. For example, you must be an American citizen, be at least 17 years old, and not yet 23 years old. On July 1st of the year, you enter the academy. And of course, you have to serve out your term at the military. I believe it's like four years. And of course, you have to serve out your term at the military. I believe it's like four years. Should you agree to enter the service academy. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and for those in the audience, open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any questions for Congressman Ed Case, Representative? Go ahead, Member Cheng.
I just want to clarify because in your statement, you mentioned that for the auto select or the auto registration for selective service includes females, but in the newsletter, it only states males. So is it both male and female will be?
It's an omission on my part. It's an omission on my part. Women as well, yeah? In fact, you asked the staffers, female staffers on his office, are you willing to serve in the military? Of course, you had to think about it.
Any other questions for Mr. Garcia? No? Thank you, sir. Thank you for providing your report. Do we have anybody from US Representative Joe Tukura's office? None? Okay, moving on our agenda, reports. Board of Water Supply? Ampel, Mr. Member DeGracia?
Thank you, Chair. No reports to share at this time.
Thank you. Any reports from any other board members attending other meetings? Hearing none. Announcements, our next meeting, our next regular meeting is scheduled for August 22nd, 7:00 p.m. here at the Philcom Center and like to call the meeting adjourned. Thank you. According to the, I don't know, let me, let me defer to Richard. Richard, is August, are, do we have that as a recess? Normal. Okay. Well, we'll check on that. So please disregard that, that announcement for now. Any further discussion? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.